We're gonna have to skip the pledge of allegiance since we don't have a flag. Can I have a roll call, please?
John Proctor?
Here.
Charles Preby?
Here.
Rich Murphy?
Here.
Sharon Peeler?
Here.
Marie Pedro?
Here.
Eric Triester?
Here.
And Kyle Felice, Z E O?
Here.
Alrighty. Public here. Hearing an application for Application 963. It's Pine Lock Road, Gales Ferry. Applicant owner is Jonathan Hiller and Sharon Messina Gay. Okay, was submitted 5321. Address is listed. Assessor's map number is 120-1940-26. The house was built in 1989. The barn predates records. Okay, uh, number four. Variance on the following sections of the zoning regulations is requested. Section 3.4 bulk requirements. Request reduction by 32.9 feet front setback. Purpose of the variance is to allow for an approximate 8.65 foot by 11.1 garage addition. What is the orientation of the proposal on the property? It's the southwest corner of existing 100-year-old garage. What is the hardship claimed? The existing structure predates zoning. Applicant would like to utilize 99 square feet of space, storage, et cetera. What is unique about the hardship? In order for the space to meet zoning requirements, it would have to be lifted and moved to the north. Topography being the issue. How will granting the appeal affect the character of the neighborhood? The addition would be continuous with existing building and no foreseen negative effect on the neighborhood. And it says, "See letters." It's signed by Jonathan Hiller, dated 5321. He's completed all the procedures. This is not a Z E O decision. Okay. Alright. Next is the Town of Ledgewood Property Summary Report. It's two pages. To the letter to the Ledgewood Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Jonathan Hiller. 26 Pine Lock Drive, Gales Ferry. My application comes before you as I am asking to seeking a variance from the town setback requirement from the road Pine Lock Drive. My garage was pre-existing structure circa 1930s on the property. I am seeking a variance from the street setback requirement for the southwest corner of the building. The proposal is to fill in the corner of the building at 8.65 feet by 11.12 feet, or approximately 96.2 square feet. The front of the proposed addition would match the front of the existing structure. The hardship exists is that it is that in order to comply with the zoning regulations, the building would have to be lifted and moved to the north. This hardship is unique in that the north side of Pine Lock Drive gives up to varying amounts of topographical, yeah, topographical drop-off. From the road frontage to Flat Brook, there was approximately 50 to 70 feet of elevation loss. This would propose a topographical issue as the building would theoretically be placed in the deep end of the pool while falling prey to the topography of the property. The zoning regulations, while being understood, was put into place much later than the original construction of the building. Thus, the hardship presented is the inability to full use of the property, which was not caused by myself as property owner. The variance would be in harmony with the intent of the zoning regulations and would not further repeat with non-compliance. Pine Lock Drive is unique in topographical relief in that the homes on the south side have varying amounts of dramatic upslope while the north side homes, number 26, have downslope. I have attached letters of support from my four close abutting and/or adjoining neighbors. Thank you for your time and consideration, respectfully submitted Jonathan Hiller and Sharon Messina. And they've signed it. We have a letter from Gail Stern at 1065 Long Cove Road. I am the abutting property owner of Jonathan Hiller to the east. He has made me aware of his wish to modify the southwest corner of his garage on Pine Lock. I recognize that this does not meet straight setback requirements per Town of Ledgewood zoning requirements. In my opinion, I do not feel this will affect the character or safety of the street and asks have such no objections to this proposal. And we have Colleen Toscano from 25 Pine Lock Road. And she's basically said the same thing. We have Irving A. Hiller, uh, who's the abutting owner to Jonathan Hiller. He says the same thing. Uh, we have Richard, Lawrence Richmond from 30 Pine Lock Drive, who basically says the same thing. The next thing we have is exhibit number two, which is a garage addition detail. Shows the garage. It shows the proposed garage addition and where Pine Lock Road is. And the next page is the same thing. It's a little bit more identifiable. The existing structure is in gray and the proposed addition is in green. And it shows that it's 10 foot from the road curb. And then the third page is this picture of the Hiller garage addition proposal showing the view from the south side. Exhibit number three is a picture of the property. Looks like the rain gut has been taken down. It's got some, it's got a stone wall in front. And you can see how it's shown. This picture number two, picture number three, and then picture number four. Exhibit number five is the boundary survey and proposed garage addition property of Jonathan Hiller and Sharon Messina, Redwood and Marine LLC. Okay, it shows the house. Paved driveway. Pool, and so forth. Okay. Exhibit number five. Certified mail. Tells about holding it. We've got the certified receipt. Exhibit number six is memorandum for the record of Application 963. The Z E B A meeting, 616. Staff comments. 26 Pine Lock Drive is located in the R40 Minimum Density Residential District on 1.1 acres with approximately 200 feet of frontage on Pine Lock Drive. The site is developed with a single-family residence and a pre-existing non-conforming accessory structure garage with regards to its front yard setback, which at its closest point is located 2.1 feet to the front line of Pine Lock Drive. Applicant proposes to construct an 8.65 foot by 11.12 foot, 96.2 square addition to fill in or square off the existing garage. This addition is shown on the site plan provided by the applicant entitled Boundary Survey and Proposed Garage Addition, dated April 26, 2021. Applicant states as a purpose of the variance request is to allow for the addition. States the existing predates zoning. Applicant also provided four neighbors in support of the proposed addition. In review of...
You don't really have to read that, Mr. Chairman. It just outlines these statutes that apply to this.
Yeah, it's just, yeah. Yeah, it's all part of the public record. Okay. And then we have some extra copies. Alright. Mr. Hiller, I assume that's you? Would you please come up to the microphones and identify yourself?
Jonathan Hiller from 26 Pine Lock Drive in Gales Ferry.
Alright. Want to give us any more information other than what we've already written to the record?
Well, I was planning to read the exact letter that you read, but there's not much more to add to that except that, like you said, the garage was built. I don't even know when it was built exactly. I remember being up in the, in the second floor and I saw something about 1920, 1930 written on a board. So that's my best guess. And I was, I was driving. I was thinking this evening, at one point Pine Lock Drive didn't even come up that far. So whether the building was built there before the road even went in, I don't even know because it used to go down, if you're familiar with the road, it used to go down and go over an old stone bridge and go up behind my parents' house. Their backyard used to be Pine Lock Drive. And then I don't know what year the town took it over and my parents built their house in 59. And then Captain Card, who was the developer of that whole area, pushed Pine Lock Drive down to his property, the way it is now at the stop sign. So whether or not the barn was first or the road was first. But anyways, thus the barn, we called it the barn. The garage came to be so close to the edge of the road as it does reside now.
Is it actually a garage or just a storage building?
It is a garage. When we built my house in 89, Dad and I, Dad built the, I helped Dad build the house. I gotta be clear about that. He, we built, we built the house in 89 and several years later we modified the garage, the barn, to be a garage. And it is a garage, two-car garage. So that one corner that you see in the pictures is the proposed corner that I just wanted to kind of fill in, if you will. And just the extra space between the wood glitter, you know, the extras.
So it kind of looks like now, I drove by yesterday, just take a look.
Oh, you did?
It looks like the part that's closest to the road is like a workshop or a store.
Yeah, I have, I have a little workbench set up in there and I was just hoping to continue it through and square, square off the building, allow for extra storage space. No, no heating, no cooling, no facilities, no...
The part that's on the, oh, would that be the left side as you're looking at it from the road? There's like a shed roof coming down.
Right.
And was that added on later or was that part of the original garage?
That was added on, that was added on later. Right, correct. In order to make it feasible so you could drive the cars in through the side of the garage and fit, you'll fit four and a half, if you will.
Yeah. But that stopped, that's why the storage space there stopped 10 feet.
Right. We just made it, we just made it wide enough for the two vehicles to bump out. In hindsight, we probably should have tried to, you know, at that point, we had to get the variance in.
Yeah.
You know, never thinking ahead.
And when was that variance granted, do you know?
Oh, the original one? My dad's 93 and my memory's not much better. I'm not sure exactly how we did that.
But dating back to the 80s or...?
Well, the house was 89, so we built, we modified the garage sometime after that. So I've got, you know what, I've got it in cement.
80s or 90s?
Early, early 90s, I would say. Yes, yes, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions from the gentleman? Eric? Eric? Ready?
Yep.
Okay.
Nice presentation, though.
I guess that's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Hiller. Okay. So I guess we adjourn the public hearing on Application 963. And we will...
Just for the record, to state, state, there's nobody here to speak in favor or to speak against.
Thank you very much. Is, is there anybody here to say anything for or against the application? There is nobody here to speak for or against the application. The public hearing for Application 963 is adjourned. Okay? That means I have to open up the regular meeting. Okay, we're gonna need a roll call for the regular meeting. But before we get to that, no further information can be made while we're in the regular meeting, okay? Thank you. Roll call, please.
John Proctor?
Here.
Charles Preby?
Here.
Rich Murphy?
Here.
Sharon Peeler?
Here.
Marie Pedro?
Here.
Eric Triester?
Here.
Alright. All full members, which are Eric...
His name is Rich.
Louis, Rich, Sharon, and Charlie are all the voting members for this application. Okay, can I hear a motion for Application 963?
I move to grant the variance as requested in Application Number 963 at 26 Pine Lock Drive, Gales Ferry, Connecticut, as follows. A 32.9 foot variance of a minimum required 35-foot front yard setback per zoning regulation section 3.4 to allow for the construction of a 6.65 foot by 11.12 garage addition located a distance of 2.1 feet to the front property line.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
My, I have, my concerns are primarily statutory. I agree with everything the applicant said. I would love to vote in favor of it. But statutorily, I honestly do not believe we can. There's actually, there's actually two violations of the zoning regs that would, that would happen if, if we approved this. Our regulations do not allow for accessory structures in the front yard. And the garage is in, is a lawful pre-existing non-conforming structure in the front yard. And if we allowed this addition, it would constitute an intensification of a non-conforming use. So that's, that's, that's one, that's one problem. The other problem is that the inability to use property the way a property owner would like to use the property does not constitute a legal hardship. Unless the property cannot be used, cannot be reasonably used for a use that's listed in the zoning regs. And if it's a residential use, obviously, there's, with a house and a pool and everything, the property has a reasonable use. So if, but the fact that, that there's a small area of a pre-existing garage in a non-conforming location cannot be used does not translate into the fact that the property does not have a reasonable use. The hardship has to be unusual, has to be extreme, it has to be significant. And I don't, in my opinion, that burden has not been satisfied.
Okay, anybody else?
I would argue that the hardship is that the pre-existing non-conforming structure was built with a, with a omission of a, of a corner that probably shouldn't have been built at the time, it wasn't. And that's the hardship. Not that it's, that it's not something that you can fix by, you know, building somewhere else. Having driven by, I don't think we else drove by, but it just looks like it should be filled. I mean, I think it would enhance the neighborhood and make the value of everybody's property around there better. I understand what you're saying, Eric, and I can see that there are some technical issues. I think sometimes the overwhelming benefit to the neighborhood is something we should consider as well.
Okay, anybody else? I was down in that neck of the woods today, unfortunately. I forgot the street address when I was driving through there. But I'd been by the house before. And I have to agree with you. It looks like it's incomplete. And I will, I don't know if you can call that the front yard or not, but I'm not sure when the house was built and when the road was changed and whatever. But I agree with you that it would enhance the neighborhood and the property values for everybody. That's all I have. Is there anybody else that has anything to say?
I would like to amend my motion.
Okay.
And the new motion would be, I make a motion to grant the variance as requested in Application Number 963 at 26 Pine Lock Road Drive, Gales Ferry, Connecticut, as follows. 32.9 foot variance of a minimum required 135, 35-foot front yard setback per zoning regulation 3.4 to allow for the construction of a 8.65 foot by 11.12 garage addition located a distance of 2.1 feet to the front property line and to grant an exception to the 8.2D requirement that prohibits accessory structures in the front yard.
Okay. Modification to the motion has been made. Do I hear a second? It's been seconded. Is there any discussion on the modification motion?
The, by amending the motion, what we have done is we have corrected the omission in the application for a request of the variance to intensify a non-conforming structure in the front yard.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Motion's been made, been seconded and accepted. I now put the motion for a vote. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
John Proctor?
Yes.
Charles Preby?
Yes.
Rich Murphy?
Yes.
Sharon Peeler?
Yes.
Eric Triester?
No.
Okay, motion's been made and accepted. The application for variance 963 has been approved. Okay. That's done. Mr. Hiller? If you'll see Deb in the zoning office, what, two days, three days?
Has to be, um, um, posted, not in the newspaper, but it'll be posted on our website. And he'll have to wait 15 days for any appeals.
You have to wait 15 days in case somebody decides to file a motion to appeal our approval. And once that's done, you'll be able to have your variance and you'll be able to make your addition. Thank you.
Oh, happy birthday.
Alright. We have approval of Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing in Regular Meeting, 17 March of 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
I move to approve the next.
Second? Okay, meeting minutes have been approved and seconded.
I read them closely and I, I'm confident that they are accurate.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Meeting minutes approved. Do we have any correspondence?
No.
Okay. Any old business?
No.
Alright. Just to let you know, the application for our winery, it's, all the paperwork is posted, right? All those letters that, between planning and, between Liz and the lawyers and all that kind of stuff is in the official record, right?
Right.
Okay. Basically, they pulled, if you drive by the place, you'll see this posted up there. He's applying for a liquor license of some sort. Is that a liquor license or is that the beer license?
I don't know what his sign out there said exactly, but I know he was trying to get a beer cafe license, I believe it was called. Town attorneys still are viewing that, but that's the plan now.
Okay. So we may not see the end of this. It may still come up. My understanding from all the correspondence that I saw is that he is allowed to provide tasting of craft beer, okay? At the winery, where a person, just like they taste the wine, they can taste the craft beer and they can buy beer and take it off the property. Okay? What the liquor license that he's got posted up there to sign for, I don't know what that's all about yet either. My initial understanding from our Z E O, Kyle, right? You'll have to forgive me, my, my remembering of names sucks.
Tonight, obviously.
I got news for you. I can't remember the names of my coworkers.
You need your wife, you're too dependent on her.
No. Her I remember.
No, I mean, she remembers for you.
Well, anyway, he was trying to initially open up a bar, basically. He wanted to be able to sell the beer and have people drink it right there. Okay? Which is, you're not allowed to operate a bar in a residential area or in a farming area. However you want to look at it, that, to me, the farm is in a residential area. So anyway, that's still going on.
Is it beer or wine you're talking, is he selling beer now?
I never saw anything at all in any of the applications about beer.
Me neither, I couldn't figure out the...
And I read through all of them.
Go ahead.
The appeal itself, excuse me, was just for a enforcement letter that was issued to him. It didn't specifically reference alcohol.
It was ours, right?
It was, it was events in general. It was issued to several different farms in the area, excuse me. So it wasn't specific to alcohol and that's what was appealed originally.
Right, that's what the appeal was about.
Right, so that's, that's what was withdrawn at this time.
Because he, he had put or gave to you the paperwork from the state that said he could have a license to sell beer. And we didn't sign it, it had to be signed by us, by town. He did not sign it. But at the same time, he sent a letter letting him know that the zoning commission is rewriting rules and regulations for these wineries to hold the events like he's doing? First off, his accessory building was not approved by us. Okay? Where he does his tasting and all that kind of stuff. That was approved by Ledge Light. As far as I know, the fire marshal has not looked at the building. I don't know if it's been looked at for electrical properties and all that kind of stuff. There's no plan for his...
We don't get involved in any of those things.
Yeah, again, the appeal was for the use of the property. We didn't, we don't get any specifics like that with, that's, that wasn't, that's what was appealed, the, the use of the property. Not the, not signing the permit either, that wasn't really included.
The application is technically been withdrawn, so it's as if it was never submitted.
Right. But there's, there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of things that are going on. First off, as I understand from our Z E O, he never applied for anything to planning and zoning for a site permit, for the parking lot, for the runoff of all the water and everything else that he's got going on. Okay?
But he does have a building permit to convert his swimming pool into the tasting room.
He had a, he had a permit to build the tasting room.
Right. And he can't get a building permit unless he gets a zoning permit first.
Right. But he never, never put it, you know, I don't, did it say he wanted to build the tasting room or just that he wanted to convert the pool into a building?
I, that would just be a building permit conversion, but I don't want to keep, I don't want to keep discussing this. It was withdrawn. It may come up in the future and at that point we can address it then.
Okay. And just to let the, let these guys know what's going on. That's all I'm trying to do.
What I'm more concerned about is, is the zoning commission doing something?
Yes, they're, they're...
Rewriting the regs so that he can...
My understanding is that he himself is involved in the agricultural part of things. My understanding is that he himself is involved in the agricultural part of things.
Good. That's fine.
Because we also have the new, what was it? What's the name of the farm? A farm down on Shoeville Road, I believe it is. They got a grant from the state to build an accessory building and other stuff to allow them to hold weddings and functions and stuff there. Okay? The person that owns that farm is also involved with the planning and zoning commission writing rules and regulations for the farms and areas around here to be able to be able to do those events, stuff like that.
Good. They should.
Good. We've been talking about this for a little while.
Yeah, right. It's time. Things have to change. It's a wonderful place to have a wedding.
Right.
Good.
So any proposed new regulations still have to go in front of planning and zoning and have a public hearing process and all that?
Right. All that stuff. And we should get, we should get an input into that, but not necessarily. In the past, they have asked us for some input, but that doesn't always occur. Just to let you know. So if you're interested, you might want to...
I don't think as a board we have standing.
I think if you wanted to, as just residents of the town.
But we can certainly testify during the public hearing as to how we feel about it. We don't lose our rights as citizens.
Right. Right. But they haven't, and sometimes they asked us to look at the rules and regulations to see if we could find where they may have put something that would require everybody to come to, before the zoning board again, which, like, you know, like we did on one seventeen, that whole fiasco there. And then the one with mobile homes. Remember how we used to have to approve every time they changed the mobile home because they got too old? So just keep your ears open as far as that goes. You can keep your, watching the town websites for all the information that's going on in there. Anybody else have any announcements or anything?
I would like to amend the agenda to discuss the zoning board of appeals application form briefing. It should only take about ten or four minutes.
Okay. What do you want to talk about?
The... This is the current application form that's being used in the land use office for applications to the zoning board of appeals.
You want to pass one over to Deb? Make sure she gets one? So her and Kyle can look at it or?
We have them in the office.
All right.
I don't have any significant problems with the first page. But if we go to the second page, down at the bottom, down at the bottom, the, it says examples of hardship. And it says topography of the land, i.e. ledge and elevation. It's giving that as an example of a hardship. But there's case law, the statutes, it's well established that topography by itself is not a hardship. The topography is only a hardship where it prevents the reasonable use of a property. And that reasonable use has to be a use that is listed in the zoning regulations for that district. So that little bullet, examples of hardship, topography, is misleading. It's not completely wrong, but it's misleading. And it encourages people to make applications because they can't put a shed where they want. They can put it someplace else on the property and they don't even technically even need, they don't, they're not legally entitled to a shed. But they're using topography as a hardship. And because it's on the application form, they think that they have, that they, they think that they will be granted the variance. Same thing with the shape of a lot. The shape of a lot is not a hardship, not by itself. It's only when the shape of the lot prevents a reasonable use on the lot that complies with the zoning regs. And the third bullet, the orientation of the structure, again, that is also not a hardship in its own right. It's only when there is no orientation available that will allow a reasonable use of the site that is a conformance of the regs. So those two examples of hardship encourage people to spend five hundred and sixty dollars for an application for a variance that is legally required to be denied. And I don't think that's fair. Now, further on, examples where claims of hardship do not apply, medical reasons and disability. We are required by the Americans with Disability Act to make reasonable accommodations for someone with a recognized disability. We can put conditions on it. We can put time limits on it. We can require the reasonable accommodations such as a hamp, a ramp in the front setback or whatever it is. We can put a condition in the variance that it be removed when the disability is gone. Size of family, that's a gray area. But I don't think we are obligated to allow a massive house to be built on an infinitesimally small lot just because it's fifteen people. Attorney needs to be checked on that. Financial hardships is valid. A financial hardship is not a reason to grant a variance. And the hardship does not be created self-created. That is also a true sentence. So my concerns are the first three bullets under example of hardship are technically wrong or incomplete. And the first, the first reason under where claims of hardship do not apply, the disability, we are, not only are we allowed to do so, we are required to do so to grant a reasonable accommodation under the town's zoning regulation, which is a variance, to accommodate a disability. So those are my concerns. Back in twenty sixteen, I proposed an alternative application form which addresses these things. And I'd like everyone to look at it and I gave a copy to Liz Burick, our town planner. And she promised me, this is when she first came on board about two and a half years ago or so. And she promised me that she would look at it and make the changes, but she never quite got around to it. And she's technically, even though she's technically a town planner, she's a legal resident of Las Vegas at the current time. So I don't know if she's going to get to it or not, but I would like, like to suggest that we look at the alternative or modifications to the alternative or modifications to the current application, whatever it takes. But we need, we need to fix, in my opinion, I think we should fix those deficiencies.
Okay. Except knowing people, they're going to want some example of what a hardship is.
Yeah. People don't do...
If we take these out, what do we put in?
Well, we need, we need to put in lawful ones. For example, the disability one is a lawful one.
Okay, but we went through that a couple of years ago with another application and we were told you can't take it away at any point in time. Once you buy it to a property, it is there forever.
Right. No, no, we can, we can put that in.
That is not what the lawyer told us.
That expiration date, that expiration date stays in the property records forever, but it can expire. It can expire. You know, it doesn't vanish out of the land records. It sits there. And virtually all variances never expire because they go, because it's a feature, it's caused by the land.
It goes with the property.
Goes with land. But if you grant a, if you grant a variance due to a disability, you can put an expiration date or a condition or a...
Most cases, like where you want to put in a ramp for a person to get to a house or whatever, doesn't require a variance.
Why?
Why? Because that's where you turn around and allow the person to put the ramp in until the disability is no longer present and they can remove the ramp. Doesn't require a variance. Doesn't require a variance to put in a ramp for a handicap because of the handicap act.
Okay.
Okay? The only time that that comes into play is if you're building something and you don't put it in the plans to have a ramp built. Like, you're building, like the town hall, okay, in a police station. They were built with accessible areas for wheelchairs to come in. If they had been built without it, then they would have to come in and get a variance and you'd have to say...
I don't disagree with that. But, but the... The other, the other variances that we're allowed to make is if a variance will reduce a non-conformity.
Right.
And we should put that example, if we're going to put examples on the application form, that would be a good one. Because it's simple, everybody understands. But those other three, unless they are made complete or we provide specific examples that are blessed by an attorney, which I don't think you would do. I think it would be better if the application form was silent regarding regarding examples of hardship and examples of non-hardship.
Well, to me...
Because the risk is too great.
To me, topography is a hardship.
Only if it causes somebody to not do something.
We had that case here once. And if Rich remembers, the guy wanted to put in a garage. And we made the fact that he could put, because the way the house was situated with the topography and everything else, like, we allowed him to put the garage in with the requirement. They didn't have a front and back door. Because if he didn't have a front and back door, he couldn't get to the back of his property to do anything, especially with the septic systems and all the rest of that stuff. So...
All I'm saying is, even that approval, and I, we have the discretion to do it, I'll give you one. But if that decision was appealed, we would lose.
Possibly.
So because of the case law.
Well, case law is case law. And a lot of times, case law gets thrown out. Because they, at the time they made their decision, they were wrong.
Things have changed.
Okay? So...
But I strongly recommend that we not have anything on the application form that appears to directly conflict with the statutes or with the, with the well-established case law that they...
Well, I don't, I don't see as it's...
Because it encourages people to make applications that may not be approved.
Kyle, you have something to say?
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with what Mr. Treaster said mostly. The case law has changed that reflect what he said for the most part. Any changes we do make or any forms, I do want to send to the town attorney to have that reviewed prior, so, you know, he'll have the final say on that, but... Mr. Treaster sent me a copy of his draft, so we're going to take a look at that.
Okay, and I'll talk to Liz. Truthfully speaking, I don't think we should change anything. Because those are valid hardships. They have to prove their case, like it says on the bottom. The applicant has the burden of showing that each of these requirements are satisfied before being entitled to a variance. He has to prove that really there was a case for each and every one of them. Okay? And each and every case law case is different. Just because that, you know, they said in this case, well, topography didn't matter, it shouldn't have been granted it, blah, 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 blah. That's that one case. It's not all the cases.
In your very strict and narrow interpretation of state statute, neglects the fact that this board has the right to approve a variance. And that's, that's the whole purpose of this board is to say, no, I just, as a member of this board, I agree with what he presented today. And that's, that's the whole function of this board.
And I agree with that.
To set, to set that hard and narrow interpretation of law aside and vote what this board decides to do. That's, that's the democracy at the hand of these people.
Correct. But if there was a neighbor who objected and they appealed, we would lose tonight's case.
Wouldn't it be better if that neighbor showed up here to object rather than waiting and wasting the money in court?
Correct.
That's what we have to encourage.
And that's what, that's what this board is for, for the community. And he had, he had all his neighbors sign a form.
I don't disagree with you, Kyle. I'm just, I'm just saying that it's very difficult to grant a variance under the statute.
Well, I have to agree with Charlie. It's...
The statute allows us to say yes or no. That is the statute. And you're disregarding that. You're saying the statute could only be interpreted within these parameters. If this board says, I disagree with what's on the statute or the conditions in the law or whatever the scenario happens to be. This board has every right to say, I approve a variance. That is the whole purpose of this.
And I voted for those two.
Well, that's one of the, that's also one of the reasons, since I've been on the board, we've always tried to impress on the applicants. When you provide an, you're providing a change to your property, talk to your neighbors. See how they feel. Get their approvals. Find out who doesn't like what you're doing. Find out why. Okay? Because they're the ones that are going to cause you the problems down the line.
And, which brings up another subject, which was not in the motion, but we should, we should request P and Z to amend the regs to require the neighbors to be notified of a ZBA public hearing instead of making it optional.
Well...
I don't, I mean, I don't mean how far does the hand of government have to reach, you know?
Zoning board.
No, I'm just, but we can suggest.
Well, we do suggest that to people.
He's saying zoning board.
You're saying to make it a requirement?
It is a requirement because we post the notice in the paper. That's notifying everybody.
For us, but he's saying zoning.
I'm saying that the neighbors of a property, of a property where a variance has been requested, the neighbor should be notified by mail. Just like, just like, just like for, like for a, if somebody is requesting a apartment building. The neighbors of a proposed apartment building, because apartment buildings require public hearings, all the neighbors are notified by mail.
Well, I don't think we need to require it by mail because we do it. We notify them in the paper.
That's what the five hundred bucks is for.
Yeah.
That's for the newspaper article.
Oh, it's legal. What we're doing is legal. Don't get me wrong.
You know, and...
I'm just saying that instead of, instead of simply saying the ZBA highly recommends that your neighbors be notified.
You can't make it a requirement. No, no, you can't make it a requirement because then you run into the problem that I notified my neighbor, but that's the guy that was living there and it wasn't the owner. Okay? So you get into too many, too many things. That's why we recommend that the neighbors be notified. He goes to talk to his neighbor, he says, well, I'm only renting the place. This is the guy that owns it. You should be talking to him. That's how that gets passed on. Okay? If you, if it's, oh, send him a letter. Anybody can send out a letter. The people that gets the letter, you know, like you and I get letters.
No, it goes to the property owner.
Well...
Don't count on the post office to deliver anything.
That's true. That's true.
You know, it goes, it goes to who's it's addressed at at the house. All right. All right. Yes, Kyle?
Two more announcements. I don't know if you all know, but our planner Liz Burick is leaving us the end of the month.
Oh, you've got to be kidding.
She's working remote till July first. And then we have a new planner starting. Her name's Juliette and her last name, I can't remember at the moment.
Hodge.
Hodge. Juliette Hodge. She's coming from North Stonington. So she's experienced. She'll still be starting here July one.
Oh, she's experienced in having Stonington ZBA members sue one or another.
That's North Stonington.
Oh, that's, she's from North Stonington?
Yes.
Well, I don't know whether it's Stonington or North Stonington.
I don't either, but yeah.
It's Stonington.
She'll be starting July first.
What, who sued who?
Are you kidding?
Stonington's had a mess with one board member.
One board member suing another board member.
As individuals?
Oh, yeah, for doing their job.
Oh, my.
Yeah, I know, I sat in, I sat, when I was in the Navy, I sat in court and listened to that.
Oh, my.
Yeah, it's fun and games. Stonington and where else was it?
That's where Julie was.
Yeah, there were problems there too.
Yeah. He had all sorts of problems. Anything else there, Kyle?
That's all I have.
And what, where's Liz going?
She actually relocated out of state.
She's in Nevada. She's in, someplace either in or near Las Vegas.
Doesn't like the wet air anymore, huh?
It's hot there.
I think it's a boy.
But it's dry.
Okay. A hundred degrees, half or not.
You can go to Phoenix, Las Vegas today. It's a hundred and ten degrees. It's hot and dry. A one seventeen?
One seventeen. Phoenix is supposed to be...
I was in Phoenix once.
All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Some good?
Yes.
No move. Motion is made, seconded, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to see everybody.
Yeah.